No, is it?
Is it secure?
It's seven.
Called the order the November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, Ellsworth City Council meeting, all councils are present with the exception of Council Kaplan and Council Blanchett. First item, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and all the rules that we approve at our annual meeting. And also I would just remind everybody, if you have phones, to please silence them. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, the October twenty first, two thousand nineteen, regular council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
Moved and approved, any discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Item five, city manager's report.
It's all about the holidays. The tree lighting at S.K. Whiting Park will be on Saturday, November thirtieth, at five P.M. That also happens to be a small business Saturday, so come shop local and take in the tree lighting at five. Also, if you're near City Hall, stop in and bid on a variety of items donated by local businesses at the city's silent auction, which will run through November thirtieth to benefit the Fuel Discretionary Fund. The annual holiday parade is set for Saturday, December seventh, at ten A.M. For a complete list of holiday events, check out ChristmasinEllsworth.com. But also mention that Local Roads Committee is meeting Wednesday night at six P.M. And I believe that's what I had to cover.
Committee reports, any councils attend any recent committee meetings? Council Moore?
Yeah, not only that, I found my notes still. The Harbor Commission met on November thirteenth. Number of things reported, total fees collected for two thousand nineteen to this point has been thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Included in that is two thousand dollars nearly in donations, which is, that is nice. We've been talking about allowing boaters to take advantage of the harbor until the ice freezes over, and as it stands right now, we have one trench and slip that is being used until the ice freezes over. And we anticipate that we may have more interest before it's over. What was suggested by the Harbor Commission was to have it so they could stay all winter long, but because of the ice eaters and so forth, we decided that if we're going to try anything like that, that we should close it when the ice is in, and then maybe open it up early in the spring because there are a few commercial boaters who'd like to use the harbor. During the storm, I think, late October, five lobster boats came into the harbor to avoid the storm on Friday, I think it was. In two thousand nineteen, we sold approximately ten thousand gallons of gas, which isn't too bad. And everything's been winterized, the harbor's closed, the ice is are being installed, perhaps they're already in. There was a pre-construction meeting for the new gas pumps back on the eleventh, and it appears that the new gas tanks should be in as scheduled in the spring for the two thousand twenty season. And we're really looking forward to having both gas and diesel available, there's been a considerable amount of interest expressed at the harbor for a diesel pump. And that just about does it.
Any other committees? I can report out on the Recreation Committee, there is ongoing discussions about developing a dog park, some ideas floating around, and that's, so that's being worked on. The, I've noticed the ice rink is starting to be put together, and maybe Citizen Forty is up there now putting it together for us. I know he's listening, so.
Not surprise this.
So get out there, Gary. So that's, that's going up. And the other piece that I wanted to bring back to the council is the Rec Committee would like us to endorse an, kind of an ad hoc group that's already representatives of the Rec Committee along with some other groups in the city to meet, to develop some plans, and they have some ideas developing now for the state of Maine bicentennial in terms of how Ellsworth can be a part of that. So they were looking for this council to endorse that so that the city could kind of have some ownership of that. Any objections to endorsing that Rec Commission Committee? So we will send that back to the committee and have them work with the other groups. The last item is that the appointments to the committees and commissions I've distributed in front of you, this will also be posted on the city website so that everybody can see who has been appointed to which committees rather than going through it and reading it, and so that should be posted, I'm not sure when that will get up there. Couple weeks?
Week.
Or less, okay. One exception from this list is that on the capital planning, Council Phillips will be replacing Council Grindle. Any other committees? Item number seven, citizens' comments, this is the part of the agenda where we open it up for citizens to comment on any item they would like to discuss, with the exception of agenda items already there, so if you would like to speak, feel free to come up to the podium, state your name, and take it away.
I have a handy handout for you if you might.
Do you want to pass it around?
Nick Turner with The Grand, congratulations to the new council members and the returning council members. This is sort of a better late than never report, I meant to give it at the end of the summer season, but better late than never. So the city very generously funds the entertainment down at the waterfront, the waterfront concerts, and they also very generously include The Grand in that programming. And we, I feel like we've come a long way even in the last few years of providing great entertainment down there, and I actually went to almost all of them. So this report pretty much, pretty accurately accounts for attendance at the waterfront concerts, for a total of over twelve hundred people came down. Each one of the eight, that's just across eight concerts, over twelve hundred people came down to enjoy them, they were amazing, they were fun, they were entertaining, I got to see a lot of returning people every week, which was really neat, they really, I think that the most impactful thing about it was they really looked forward to it, like it was something that made their summer, they'd make picnic lunches, and they'd meet their friends, and they'd set up way before the bands, and they'd enjoy the bands, and they'd dance, and I saw people make friends, I saw tourists, I saw people, talked to people who'd just come in, saw the sign, saw what was available, they were camping down the road, and I think it's a really wonderful program and a very, something that the city should be proud of. And it was great, it was a lot of fun. So thank you again for the funding to bring the waterfront concerts, concerts every summer, we look forward to doing it again and bringing more great bands down there. Does, anyone have any questions? Awesome.
I live across the river, can you make it a little bit louder?
Little bit louder. We can work on that, turn some speakers around. Absolutely, I'm happy to do that. And if you haven't attended one, they are something else, and I, I'm not over exaggerating when I say, almost every one of it was just idyllic down there, it was beautiful, the water and the birds, and there was no bugs, and there was one bad one, that was Fox and the Hound Open Mic Night, which we're going to probably do again, which invited a bunch of musicians to come down, that was the bad weather night, that was the only bad weather night, it was rainy and forty people still came and had fun, so, thank you very much, council.
Thanks, Nick. Anyone else like to make a comment? All right. Item number eight, presentation of awards, Kelly Herrick.
So this certificate of service for Kelly Herrick is in recognition of your five years of service in your various positions, from deputy city clerk to deputy treasurer, tax collector, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community and contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would like to read the Small Business Day proclamation. Whereas the government of Ellsworth, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently thirty, thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States, they represent ninety-nine point nine percent of all businesses with employers, employees in the United States are responsible for one point eight million net new jobs in the last year. And this proclamation really is about that appreciation for all the small businesses, we know how important they are for this city, and certainly take this opportunity to thank all of the small businesses who operate in the city of Ellsworth, certainly welcome more, and, and just want to make this available, if anyone would like a coffee as well. Unfinished business, consent agenda, all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion, there'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Council Order number one-one-one-nine-oh-two, discussion in action on the request of the Branch Lake Water Steward to set the Branch Lake Boat and Aeroplane sticker fee at zero dollars for the calendar year two thousand twenty. Council Order number one-one-one-nine-oh-three, request of the city assessor for abatement of F.Y. two thousand seventeen in the amount of two hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty cents, and F.Y. two thousand eighteen in the amount of two hundred twenty-seven dollars and five cents, taxes assessed to David Mitchell, munis ID number one-three-zero-zero-two-two, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents plus interest and fees. Council Order number one-one-one-nine-oh-four, request of the planning board to accept a resignation letter from Lisa Edman with a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And Council Order number one-one-one-nine-oh-five, request of the Recreation Commission to appoint Shane Lowell to the Recreation Commission with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Would any councillors like to remove for one of those items for separate discussion?
Item twelve, Jim, Mr. Chairman.
Item number twelve?
I'd like that discussed separately, sir.
Okay, then we will address items nine, yes?
Item ten, I would have to recuse myself, I know the family.
Anyone else? Okay, so we will take items number nine, ten, and eleven as one motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in a second, all in favor? And I'll oppose, one abstention. Okay, item number twelve.
Mr. Chairman, I have some reservations about appointing a Shane, I have no problem with the gentleman himself, except that his employment is with the YMCA, who's one of a, one of the largest, or perhaps the largest benefactor from the city of Ellsworth financially, and putting him in a voting position on that board would have, I feel, the fox watching the chickens.
As a former member of the Recreation Committee, I agree with John, and I thought we'd already discussed this in the past and decided that Shane should not be on the Recreation Committee.
We were at the meeting, and I thought we discussed in the committee meeting that now that Shane is an Ellsworth resident, that he could be on the committee if there was ever a vote that needed to be made with regards to anything with the YMCA that he would have to abstain. We have acting members like Nick Turner, who's part of The Grand, who also receives funding, so we do have others that serve in the same capacity, and it doesn't seem to be an issue, so.
The amount of financial influence between the Y and also from past history of the Y and the city, and, and it leads me to believe that I personally, I am against it for other, for that particular reason.
Other councillors? Council Moore?
I wasn't aware of, of the feeling about this, when I first heard of it, I thought that being very active and athletic and best at functions and so forth, that he would be a good appointee. I do think that we would have to make it clear that he should recruit, recuse himself from issues that might conflict with the city of Ellsworth with the Y. Other than that, I, I don't see that he's unfit for the job.
Council Phillips?
The, I know Nick is, is on The Grand, and the financial involvement with them is substantially less money than it is with the YMCA when we're giving them, I think in the range of sixty-five thousand dollars plus money for the hockey rink, plus they have free use of the fields that we maintain, so there's a fairly large financial involvement with them, and then, and allowing him to sit on that board, even though he is an employee, I think has an undue influence on the perhaps outcome of some of the votes. Don't doubt the man's abilities, it's his affiliation that concerns me.
I guess, I would just add that, I certainly understand that ultimately any votes come to the council, coming out of any committee or commission are recommendations, so ultimately this council would approve and endorse any type of spending issue and item. One of my concerns is we have somebody who is very interested in helping out the community in terms of recreation, whether it's with the Y or elsewhere, he's been attending those meetings, he's been very involved in that, and he's been very interested in going beyond the Rec Commission to help the city. So I think if we're going to have, draw a line in terms of where that, where that conflict arises, then we should decide what that is, if there's a monetary number, define what that is, otherwise I think people who are interested in joining should do that, and it's up to this council to make the ultimate decisions about where the, the spending goes.
I believe Council Hamilton makes a very valid point in that the final decision comes down to the council. Over the last several years, we've had a lot of people go on the Rec Commission and not finish their terms, there have been many months in a row where the board has not been filled because nobody has stepped forward to become a member of it. And because it comes before the council in the end, then Shane is, to me, has proven to be a valuable member of it, has been very active on it, and I would support his nomination to it.
Other comments? Council Miller?
I, I like the way Shane has been acting and the capacity he's been acting as an advisor to the board and coming and reporting from the YMCA, I don't like him being a voting member of the board.
Any other further comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the acceptance of the appointment for a member, I gotta pull the glasses off. Move to approve the acceptance of the appointment for a member to the Recreation Commission, Shane Lowell, term to expire six-thirty, two thousand twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four are four, all those opposed? Three opposed, the motion passes. New business, public hearing in action on the following business licenses. VFW one oh-nine, four nineteen Main Street for renewal of a city Class B license, vichyler, liquor, and amusement, and renewal of a state bottle club registration. Madam Clerk, I understand everything is in order with this application. Open the public hearing. Public hearing is open, would anybody like to comment on this? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councillors?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the VFW one oh-nine application.
Second.
Movement approved, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Acadia Bowling Lanes LLC, twenty-five Eastward Lanes for a new city Class B license, vichyler, liquor, and arcade, and a new state restaurant, Class Three and Four, malt and vinous liquor license. This is a new application, and I understand that there is a representative from Acadia Bowling here to...
Actually, I went to double check with them, they didn't send anyone, it's new, I left a message this afternoon, but I don't know what happened. It's new only because they're changing the LLC, it was heard in September, I'm going to say owners, but by ordinance, they're new, they're supposed to have a representative here, so I guess it would need to be tabled, if you could hold the public hearings, if they did pay for the public hearing, that would be great, and then next month we can just run it as they just were presented.
Council Phillips?
Rule was in place many years ago for a particular reason, there were certain times that people weren't showing up, we've had representation from the same owners now, all this is a name change.
The LLC actually, the names.
Yeah, but it's the same people running it that we already heard and approved three, four months ago, so the requirement for them to be here is probably redundant where we've already seen them, if it was a different ownership, I would feel that would, I would agree, we'd follow that, but the original ordinance were times when it would have been nice to talk to the people coming in, but that's passed and that's other history, but I think with this, knowing that, that we'd be remiss not to just understand.
On the packet, I think it mentioned that they have a temporary license for beer, wine, and mixed drinks.
They do, the state, in September, the state gave them a temporary until they could hear it again because of the LLC change, so right now they're operating on that temporary license, we would, if it wasn't granted tonight, we would need to send them another letter to see if the state would be willing to extend it, or they won't, or we'll just...
Well, I, I think Council Phillips pretty much hit the nail on the head, so we can go ahead on contingency and approve it, subject to them meeting with you or talking to you.
All councillors, okay with? So we will open the public hearing. Anybody would like to speak, public hearing is open. Public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Acadia Bowling Lanes LLC, twenty-five Eastward Lanes for a new Class B license, and waive the requirement to be here as they were here under a different name, same owner in a prior meeting.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item fourteen, public hearing in action on revising the user rates for the Ellsworth Water Department.
Hello, Reggie Wenzel from the Ellsworth Water Department. Our last increase was in two thousand and eight, the previous one before that was nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight. We have Nick Henry here, he is the one who did our rate study, I think at this point I'll let him go over his findings from his study.
So where, your water department is regulated by the Maine Public Utilities Commission, we are governed by their statutes, so we're holding a public hearing, and they have set rules for that hearing, the first of which is we're required to notify all customers of their rights under these statutes, so to start this hearing, I'm going to go through those rights, if anyone has any questions, we can ask them, we can, so everyone's on the same page, I'll give a few reasons just for why we're here, whether we need a rate increase, and what the rate increase looks like for our customers, and then we can open it up for customer questions, comments, concerns, and that would satisfy all requirements for the Public Utilities Commission. So to start, this rate case is governed by thirty-five dash A, MRS, section sixty-one oh-four, and a customer has the right to request additional information related to present and proposed rates from the department, the right to an open and fair hearing, which is this, and the right to assistance from the public advocate. Customers have the right under section sixty-one oh-four to petition the PUC to suspend and investigate the department's rates according to MRS section three-ten, if on or before December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, fifteen percent of the department's customers file with the treasurer of the department and with the PUC a petition or petitions demanding review of the PUC of the proposed rate changes. And we're required to notify you that signatures on the petitions filed according to section seven are invalid unless accompanied by the printed names and addresses of the signers, and upon request, we will provide proper petition forms, and we have some here if any customers would like them. So a quick summary of the rate increase, we're looking at a ten percent overall rate increase. The PU, on the PUC website, they give the listing of everyone's rates across the whole state, and they measure it in twelve hundred cubic feet, it's kind of like their estimate. So Ellsworth's twelve hundred cubic foot rate is going to be seventy-four dollars a quarter, the state average is seventy-five to eighty, so we're below that state average. If we look at Hancock County, the average for Hancock County for that same amount of quarterly usage is a hundred and ten dollars a quarter, way below that metric. And if we look at utilities of similar size based on number of customers, a thousand to two thousand, we're rate in line with that metric of about seventy-four dollars a quarter, so those metrics indicate that that ten percent increase really was, we were trying to balance, you know, the fairness of the rate to our customers. I believe it went out in a memo that the average household on your system uses about eighteen hundred cubic feet per quarter, so what they're looking at is about nine dollars a quarter increase, or three dollars a month. The minimum charge for your five-eighths inch meter, they're going to see about a five dollar and fifty cent increase per quarter. And it's going to put your cost per gallon of water at, under a cent, and this water meets all drinking water state, federal requirements, so for a penny a gallon, that's what your water's going to cost you. What we did with the management team is we analyzed, we were trying to balance the short-term needs of your customers and the long-term needs of the department, okay? And if we went for everything allowed with all current PUC statutes, rules, regulations, we could have gone for a thirty percent increase, so we start there, and then we try to say, well, what can our customers handle, and we, we run some scenarios, and we ended up with a ten percent increase, but if we went for everything, it would have been a thirty percent increase we could have been here talking about or trying to justify. So the reasons that we're here, we haven't had rates in ten years, state average is three to five years, so we're kind of long overdue. We've seen an increase in operating expenses in the last ten years, so we need to try to cover, we need to increase rates so we can cover those expenses. If I look at your fiscal year two thousand twenty budget for the water department, I see a forty thousand dollar net loss with really... for the water department, I see a forty thousand dollar net loss with really no money for investments in capital. So that is not sustainable long term for the Ellsworth Water Department, so we need to get rates in place, excuse me, that will generate funds for capital improvements. When I look at your capital improvement plan for the next five plus years, I see a lot of items on there that need attention, but if we don't do something, there's really no funds available to make those improvements. So at this time, I would be at the questions, comments, concerns portion of the public hearing according to PUC statutes.
Councillors, questions?
So why now as opposed to last year, next year? Why the increase right now?
I think right now it needs to be done. Ideally, if I was sitting here two years ago, I would have been saying, right now, two years ago. I mean, we can hold off, the Ellsworth Water Department will not be bankrupt if we don't do a rate increase right now, but there won't be the needed investments in the system going forward, and I see it all across with all, excuse me, with all the clients I have in this industry. The mentality is to push off a rate increase, push off a rate increase, but what happens is you don't invest in your system, and these problems just are behind the scenes. Your system starts to crumble around you, and so you're not investing in your system and you're just putting off deferred maintenance. So this should have happened two years, I mean, ideally, we should have been here probably two years ago establishing a new rate structure, a proper, a proper amount for, to be bringing in, so investments can be made into the system. And so now, it needs to be done now. I would, it would be unfortunate to not do it now and to push it off, in my opinion.
And the average cost increase to the people paying for water is going to be how much, did you say?
We had, the average household uses eighteen hundred cubic feet, so they're going to see nine dollars a quarter or three dollars a month. The small, small user, which is your minimum charge, people, this would be the fixed income elderly, the people that use under nine hundred cubic feet a quarter are going to see five dollars and fifty cents an increase per quarter, so.
I'm more concerned about the person who's on ten, if maybe lives at their house and they've got three kids and they're doing laundry and they can't afford this increase. So I'm concerned about those folks.
And true, I can't, I, yes, I think we, and I think we've balanced, I think we have balanced that with this rate increase by limiting it to ten percent. We can't, you, I mean, we can't push, keep pushing it off. There's always going to be that demographic, that concern, so you could justify never doing a rate increase if that was the only consideration.
Counsel Philips?
Yeah, sure. Part of what happens is it goes on happily and you defer your maintenance, the costs stay the same, and it's been ten years. But as you just stated, in the next fiscal year, they're in the writ, because there's not enough revenue to cover what the expenses are, and it's infrastructure inspections, and you can delay it long if you want, but if you delay it too long, then it becomes on top of itself, and this is an enterprise fund which is self-supporting. This is not tax dollars of work. This is actually users paying for the system. And unfortunately, as you have stated, there are those in the lower end that do it, but no matter what we do, whether it be taxes, whether it be sewer, whether it be water, there's always some on the lower end. But inflation does take place, the costs do increase, and unfortunately, there's, I don't know of any other way to do it but to increase it to try to compensate for our losses.
Or decrease the amount that we're actually spending on things like vehicles and gasoline and things along those lines.
It's not, that is a part of it too, but there is infrastructure improvements too that need to be made as far as water lines and all that tend to enter into it.
So luckily it's three dollars or five dollars a quarter or per month, you said, or per quarter?
Three dollars a quarter, a month, nine dollars a quarter, so equates to three dollars a month.
Yeah.
And just looking, there's no mechanism with PUC where we can just increase our rates one percent a year. We have to walk through this whole process, whether we do ten percent, fifty percent, one percent, decrease it by five percent, we're doing this whole process. There's no mechanism just to do, because that's what customers would want, and that's what I hear the most, is why can't we just do two percent a year? And that's an easier pill to swallow. But based on our current PUC rules that govern this, that's, there's, we don't have that mechanism. And looking ahead, you've got some very large capital projects coming that are going to be bonded, a standpipe, three million in infrastructure projects, three million dollar lagoon. All right, these are going to require significant debt service costs that are going to require most likely a more rate increase. If we added a twenty, if we borrow money on a twenty-year term, three million dollars, it's roughly a two hundred, two hundred and forty thousand dollar annual payment. If I dumped that onto this rate case, that's adding another twenty percent to cover the cost of that bond payment. So looking ahead, we're going to be here with rate increases, so if we, let's say we're going to need to be, have a fifty percent increase in seven years to cover all these new debt service payments, well, what your customers, what's going to be most beneficial to your customers is bite off a decent chunk now and a decent chunk later and a decent chunk later. Otherwise, if we keep this to a two percent increase, well, then the next round, when we bring on a huge bond, we're going to have to bite off a bigger chunk. But by having this ten percent increase now, it's going to help negate the size of some of these future increases that are coming.
So I'd like to ask Mr. Winslow to step up and talk about those infrastructure pieces because that's something that the public should be aware of and we should be real clear on of what we're looking at. This rate is tied to some very specific items, so could you give some more detail about what those items are, please?
So one section that we have, I've been here three years and we've had four leaks in this one area. It is old asbestos cement pipe, so there's four breaks. Every time that that line breaks, we have to send a sample off to the state of New Hampshire because nobody in Maine is qualified to do this. It's four asbestos. That is five hundred and forty dollars per sample that gets sent. So every break, that's an additional sample we have to send out. If it fails, we've got more work to do, flushing, trying to get the loose asbestos out of the line. Our lagoon system is way undersized. It's not designed for the capacity that we're producing for backwash water now, so that is coming up. That's about a three million dollar project.
And if I might, Mr. Chair, that is a compliance issue, correct?
Yes.
To the DEP?
Yes.
That's not optional.
No.
We need to do that to be in compliance.
We absolutely have to do that. We have Oak Street, Church Street and State Street that all should be redone. That, again, with those three projects together, that is about one point two million dollars to do. I'm not sure what the status is of the Oak Street Road. As far as reconstruction goes, that is another added issue.
Again, Mr. Chair, the age of those lines?
Right around nineteen forties.
Nineteen forties, yeah.
So back in two thousand and two, it was done to redo State Street from the intersection of Water Street to the, what is now the old Ellsworth High School. The cost to have that done was five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for fifty two hundred feet of water made. Part of that's been redone, so now we're looking at only twenty eight hundred feet with a cost of nine hundred thousand dollars to do that short section from Water Street to the Shore Road. Twenty four hundred feet less, and it's going to cost us three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars more than what it would have back in two thousand and two.
Any questions, Councillors?
Actually, I'd like to get a clarification on something. We, in the past, we've talked about the addition of some big, big customers like Jackson Lab.
Yep.
And a lot of the development that has gone on that uses city water. And I was under the understanding that if you get considerably more customers using more water.
Yes.
Paying higher fees, that that eventually would help to offset the deficits that you have. Is that correct or is that built in?
So that has offset that cost. I believe that was included in the rate study as well. And honestly, the more water you use, the cheaper it gets for the customer. Yes, we have to upgrade our treatment plant as well. So yes, the, I mean, that has helped significantly, but we're still.
Okay.
Slowly going down now.
That's still, that's still the truth.
Yep.
Okay.
Counsel like to do?
Right, then, so customers also have to have a opportunity.
Would anybody like to ask questions?
Good evening, Counsel. Nicole Gerhowsky. I live on the Bangor Road and I am not currently a customer, although the water line does go by my house, so at some point if my well fails, I'll become a customer. But I just wanted to speak really briefly. I sit on the Energy Utilities and Technology Committee at the State House, and so this subject matter comes in front of my committee quite a bit, and I just wanted to make you all aware that many, many communities are struggling with the same issue. And I think we're very lucky in Ellsworth that the rate increase is as low as it is, because I am hearing about communities that are experiencing a thirty percent increase, and that's not even covering what their costs are. And I will also say that we've been really looking hard for sources of funding to help from the state level, and that's been a real challenge, and there are communities that are so much worse off than Ellsworth that I think, I just want to advise you that I don't suspect that you could receive state funding anytime soon to help with these sort of deferred maintenance projects. So I'm sorry to say that we don't have a lifeline. We tried to put a bond out. It was not approved. So those are some of the challenges happening, and I think incrementally increasing in a way that is less disruptive to especially our low-income residents is probably the best way to go, so just wanted to share that perspective and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it is a public hearing, so you should declare it and strike it for record.
Yes, thank you. Public hearing is open. Thank you. Any other comments? Public hearing is closed. Counsel, would you like to do?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the Ellsworth Water Department's water rate increase per the attached documents to be effective January one, twenty twenty.
Second.
Move second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous. Item fifteen, council order number one 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 nine oh six, request of the deputy city manager to award a three million, sixty eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollar bond anticipation note.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city recently accepted bids for a bond anticipation note. The proceeds of this ban will be used for multiple projects, including the fire rescue truck, two plow trucks, vacuum sweeper, loader and pusher with wings, radio communication infrastructure, the Water Street pump station, a vacuum truck and the Alexis Way reconstruction project. The city council has previously authorized all of these borrowings, and so basically we are going out to get the money for these projects. We received six bids. The low bid was one point seven three percent from Key Bank. I wanted to add that these projects that I just mentioned will need to come back to council except for, we've already approved the plow truck, the vacuum sweeper, the loader pusher and wings and the Alexis Way project. So the other projects that I didn't list, they still need to come back for council approval. I also wanted to add that last month, the city council had authorized the borrowing of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for water improvement projects. However, we do have to go through the PUC to get approval before we can actually go out to bid. So I will be coming back to you at a later date for those particular projects for the water department.
A quick question. Did you mention the vacuum sweeper or the vacuum truck?
We have a vacuum truck and the vacuum sweeper. The vacuum sweeper was the one that was purchased by the Public Works Department.
And you did say that it would be coming to the council.
Yes, sir.
For discussion and approval?
Yes.
Each individual project?
Each individual project. At this point, the vacuum sweeper is here, one plow truck is here, loader and the loader pusher wings are here, correct?
And the Alexis Way.
Alexis Way was in agreement, and that is part of it. Yeah, that's a different, a different thing. But as far as pieces of equipment, they're here. The rest of that needs to go through council for final approval.
Yes, sir.
Is a certain amount of this money also being contemplated for road repair and improvement?
No, because it wasn't authorized for the borrowing. Last month, you had authorized a bunch of these projects. If we're going to do for any road borrowing, we'd have to come back for an authorization from the council.
And the local roads committee will be making its recommendations to the council and the capital budgeting committee, so it's on a separate track.
Other questions, comments?
I'm just wondering why we're borrowing, like looking for it. I understand the equipment's needed. I get that. But, you know, the way I run my household is I put money away because if I want to buy a car next year, I'm going to save up this year. If I want to put an addition on my house, I'll save up this year, and when I have enough, then I'll put the addition on my house. Why are we not putting money away before we need it as opposed to borrowing and then paying interest on monies? You know, is, I just don't understand us having to pay interest on monies that if we had saved beforehand, we wouldn't be paying interest and would maybe get better equipment. I'm just wondering.
If it comes a matter of budgeting again and it becomes mill rate, three and a half million dollars is three point five mils. And trying to place that on everybody's back at one time is a burden. And if it's borrowed at three and a half million and we spread it out over five, ten years, whatever it is, it lessens the burden on the taxpayer by reducing the mill rate. And these are pieces of equipment. Many of this stuff has been delayed, not purchased, and things that needed to be done and was dragged and dragged and dragged. The two plow trucks, there's logistics in getting them. I'll use that as an example. So we approved the budget in July. The highway department needs a plow truck. He goes to the dealer, they take their bids, they order the plow truck in September. It arrives just after winter's over. So we've got logistics and time. We've dragged along, so our two plow trucks are in there. We actually did purchase one already that was a secondhand truck and saved us a substantial amount of money, became available. So the second truck is in there to keep us out of that cycle so we can actually have the equipment on hand at the first milestone instead of the end of the season. And the other things have been on the wish list and some stuff moved along. But that's basically why, is to extend and reduce the immediate pain on the taxpayer. That's what it happens to be, but it's a three point five mil on this year and on top of what you're, whatever we came up, eighteen seven, eighteen two. Should have been twenty one, twenty two mil to cover this in one year. And we do put money aside in for capital improvement, but it also becomes a budgeting time. How much do you put away? You put some away, but you never quite put enough away because of the same thing, trying to keep the mill rate within reason. It's an interesting, it's, I'm not trying to belay it, but it's challenging and trying to make it affordable for everyone to live here and to yet have equipment that they need. But also in saying that, many of these things are here and they're coming before the council again, doesn't mean that everything you see there is going to pass. So that's where the savings may be, there'd be more savings. And once the money's here, we don't have to spend it. But it is, and if you've noticed, the rate is pretty darn reasonable. The cost of the interest is quite reasonable.
See, I wish I could get a rate like that.
Mm-hmm. So. Mm-hmm. So.
The other question I had is, when this was initially passed prior to the election, Mr. Shea had brought up a good point about how it used to be that items over $1 million had to go to referendum, and that that referendum is, that we don't do that anymore.
Five million under the charter.
Our charter states that it's a half of 1%, that it would have to, of our valuation, that it would go to the voters.
Right.
Which is just over.
Which is about 5 million.
And there are certain items that the council have found to be contentious that we've put out to referendum, too, as in the library project and some other things that went through. But the requirement is fairly high.
Counsel like to do?
Mr. Chairman, move to award the bond anticipation note, low bid, to Key Bank at an interest rate of 1.73% for a $3,148,992 ban as presented.
Second? Motion is second. Further discussion? All those in favor? And counselors, I would just ask that, just to help me a little bit in terms of facilitation, if you could just wait to be acknowledged, so that I, if there are other people that are wanting to talk, that I can make sure that they get a chance to get into. Thank you. All right. Item 16, public hearing in action on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, ordinance for the maintenance, administration, and disposition of tax-acquired property.
Thank you. So every year, the city forecloses on multiple timeshare units. The city currently has 252 units. We just sent out notices for another 50 units that will be foreclosing on December 7th, December 7th, somewhere in December, for their non-payment of the 2018 taxes. The process is costly, is time-consuming, it puts a lot of burden on our staff. So we have been working with Acadia Village Resort and the city attorney to come up with a solution to try to manage these more efficiently. I just wanted to give you some background information of how our ordinance for disposition of tax-acquired property works right now. Currently, after a property forecloses for non-payment of taxes, the city sends a letter of redemption that allows the taxpayer an additional 30 days to pay all of their taxes, so they'll end up paying for three years. If the taxpayer does pay, we will come to council and ask to quickly indeed the property back to them. If the owner chooses not to pay during the redemption period, the city has the authority to sell the property through a sealed bid process at a minimum bid of the passed-through taxes. If that process doesn't work, we come back to the council and we ask to have another way to sell the property. So the timeshare units that we have foreclosed on, we've been selling them for $100 a piece. We still have a ton of timeshare units. So again, we've been working with Acadia Village. We are looking at some sort of master lease agreement with Acadia Village Resort to market these timeshares, both for sale and for short-term rentals. This master lease agreement, sorry, master lease agreement will come back probably to the December meeting. I think that's what we're discussing. So these changes would address everything to do with the timeshares. It would allow the city to remove the redemption period on timeshares, write-off passed-through taxes, interest and fees once a timeshare has foreclosed, allow Acadia Village Resort to handle the rentals and sales of the property, and once the timeshare has sold, this will allow the city manager to actually sign it without staff coming to the council to request a quick claim deed.
Any questions, counselors? Counsel Moore?
For me personally, it doesn't sound like it's a good enough deal for us. I know it's, there's a lot involved in it, and it's been a long time since somebody got us into this fix.
A decade.
Decades. How much is this going to actually save our working staff in terms of time spent?
Time? Probably three or four hours a week. That runs for closure time, it's more, I would say, probably half my day is spent working on these and needing them.
And it still does amount to a certain amount of taxes being written off?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Probably $300 to $400 every time we sell one for the $100. So it's really not going to affect our write-offs. It's just going to be quicker.
This is one of those things that really irritates me. I may have spoken of it earlier.
Manager called.
Yeah. And as the deputy city manager indicated, it will come back to you for your review. I think, I did want to point out, though, I think there's independent utility to make these ordinance changes, whether you pursue the master lease agreement or not, because effectively, every time somebody buys a timeshare, they may have to wait up to a month, bring it back to the council, and it's largely a ministerial thing. When's the last time anybody challenged that? They process through, it takes up your time, everyone's time, and this way, we can turn over those units faster. And it also is something that the attorneys feel would be necessary to facilitate the master lease agreement, but I think there's value to doing it just in of itself.
Counsel Phillips?
We have now 300 plus, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to add how many more, another 50?
We'll have about 300 in December total.
So 300. And we're selling 30 a year?
Maybe.
Maybe 20 a year for $100 apiece? So it shows the true value in them. So we have, what we have in our hand is 300 pieces of worthless paper. So I agree with you, John, this isn't a pretty picture, but if there's any chance they can move it, it saves ourselves some time until there's a better solution. I'm quite sure that the assessor has been charged with trying to find an alternative method for taxation on this place, perhaps similar to what it was in the old days, where one bill was sent and they were responsible collecting and not us. But I think that's still in the works. But at this point, for what we have in hand, I think we're just as well off to bite the bullet and try it, because it's not working this way.
Bite the bullet. All right. I'll live with it if you keep working on a way to somehow get Acadia Village to take care of their own mess and just give us the tax money in a perfect world.
So I'll open the public hearing. Any comments? Close the public hearing. Additional comments by the counselors? What would you like to do? Well, I know what you want to do, but.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to amend the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Maintenance, Administration, and Disposition of Tax-Aquied Property, effective immediately, as presented in the council, in the packet.
Motion?
Second.
A second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Oh, sorry, I didn't think of it. All those opposed? One opposed. How did I miss that? All right. Council order number 11111907, request of the police chief to authorize the city manager to enter into agreement with Brown's Communication for the Digital Radio Communication System project.
Good evening, Sean Willie, Sergeant, with the Police Department. And I'm here tonight to ask you to approve some money to be able to replace our failing system. Some of it has failed and moved us into the modern era of communication. Back in 2017, we started noticing a failure with our radios, and after some legwork with Brown's Communication, determined that our Dollard Hill site, which is off the Bucksport Road, had completely died. That was put into place in 1998. So after working with them, trying to figure some things out, the cost of that, and determining, we did a site survey of our full tower system that's out on the Bangor Roads, the main repeater site, that was put into place in 1987, and has had very little work done to it besides the narrow banding that was required by the FCC in 2012. Determined that possibly not spending money to replace aging, failing equipment, mending it on Dollard Hill was not the best opportunity, and to look to get into something in the modern era for emergency communications.
Counsel Phillips?
So that's kind of where we are.
And the system you have now are current dead spots, correct, Sergeant Willie? There are areas that you cannot communicate as needed?
Even when the Dollard Hill site was up and running, we couldn't talk in the schools unless you were crossing your fingers, parted your hair right, things like that.
That's what I'm saying. There are areas that you cannot communicate, so it makes it difficult to do your job and can impact the safety.
Correct.
And this new system is going to be really good work?
We did multiple tests. We did look into using a tower that's up on Beckwith Hill. The cost of that was not the best idea. It was $768 a month just to use their tower. That'd be per antenna. So we tested a system that was a 50-watt used digital repeater system, putting out somewhere around 25 watts, and we were able to talk inside the schools, the hospital buildings we'd never been able to talk in before on our portable radios. The main repeater site we would be putting up on the Bangor Road is a actual 100-watt repeater that should be putting out somewhere around 70 watts. We only expect the communication that we saw to get better.
Out of curiosity, I know down here is a problem, but will the vast size of the city of Ellsworth, will this allow them, you, to communicate in all areas of the city as you're on patrol line?
Yes. Currently, we can communicate with the car, radio, anywhere in the city. I can tell you that the system, no matter what we do, will get no worse than what it is currently. And we're actually putting a, hope to put a directional antenna on the main site that will push more of the wattage this way towards the populated area, and then with the two remote sites for the satellite sites that will pick up the portables, we expect even more improved coverage.
I guess my question is, that'll give you system-wide communication without issue, and including buildings in spots that were now limited?
Yes.
Counsel Moore?
Does this new system have more modern technology that might mean that it would be more durable, perhaps last a little longer?
I guess I would let Rick from Brown's talk to that, and my basis of knowledge on that is, is communication equipment is a 10-year lifespan, and we've pushed some of this almost 30 years.
I see. So if we replace things as needed?
Well, we did determine that there hadn't been any type of maintenance plan or anything set up to monitor this, yes.
So if we behave ourselves, then we might be able to save a little money in the future?
Correct.
Sounds like the old saying, do it right the first time, huh?
Right.
Or do it right this time.
Is there, is there an advantage to this one? Is there a backup system? Is there currently a backup system, and does the new one have a backup system in case that one goes down?
No, there is no backup system. There are some redundancies built into this new system, so let's say the main repeater site went down for some reason, there still will be an antenna on City Hall that will at least be able to broadcast the signal out, which should, the car radios should be able to communicate back and forth in most areas. But there is no redundancy, specifically like another whole repeater system in place.
One of the issues that came up, I thought there was some process with the FCC that had to be worked out prior to implementation. Has that, can you remind me what that process is, and has that been finalized?
Yes, I had to file for some licensing to change us from analog to digital, which required some letters be sent across the state with people near our frequency, and we were able to successfully complete all that, and we are licensed to move forward with the project.
Counsel Phillips?
Warranty?
Specifically on what, which piece of?
Well, you know, I read here, and it's Exocom, is that part of the system?
Yes, so as when we moved to the digital system, we currently have Exocom that records our analog system. Actually, at the end of this year, the service agreement was up for that, so we were going to have to do something anyway. By moving to that, they have a service agreement. That is what you're reading about the Exocom, and also Brown's Communication has added in there a five-year service agreement, along with the dispatch console has a service agreement as well, because everything's through fiber and over a computer system now.
I was asking about the Exocom, and I noticed it did warranty auto-renew, reannulated until the end of the sixth year, but it also said there's a refresh that you don't get unless you buy the extended warranty. Is that something that's pertinent to this item you're buying?
For the Exocom.
It's on the, it's on the part of the document you stay in here, it's Exocom.
I would say that my knowledge about the Exocom is from Jason, and we currently have that same warranty on the analog system.
That's what I wondered. So it is basically the same thing we're doing now?
Yes.
So there is a monthly cost, I assume, or a year, annual cost?
Yes.
But the equipment that Rick's selling us has his lifetime warranty, you said?
Yeah.
Did I miss, didn't hear that correctly?
It's in the minutes. The dispatch console, is that just used by police, or is that?
No, that will be able to take all city services and other regional channels, that if there was some type of major incident, we may have to communicate on, that we don't even have those capabilities to do now.
And I, my understanding is scalable to other departments adding on to that, correct? Could use that same console?
Yes, yeah, all the other, all the other city agencies.
Public Works and Fire.
Correct. Yes.
So it's a platform for the entire city?
Correct.
Counsel Phillips?
Start to finish. Once you say yes, hall and force in place, and you're doing it.
They hope to have everything start to finish arrive within 30 days. He wants to be on the tower before January, and I would say we're looking probably, probably February-ish.
February. Who gets to climb the tower? Not you?
No. I'm done with that.
But somebody does, that ought to be a blast, December, January.
That's why they'd like to get cracking.
So by, by February is your projected launch date? Is that agreeable? And practical?
Some of it hinges on the RCC. They're currently undergoing some construction over there and adding a fourth station, which is saving us some money, because they're looking to do the same dispatch console, so the company is only incoming one time, so we're splitting a lot of costs there if that was to move forward.
I'd just make one general comment, just in terms of the items in here. It seems to me that the Exocom and the console are two items that, at the time when this was first brought forward, it had been vetted pretty extensively, and that those seem like they're pretty straightforward items that should have been included during that process. And I hope moving forward, especially once we get the capital planning committee together, that we're trying to get the full cost of a project at that time, and certainly by budgeting before we have discussions at this table. With that, counselors, what would you like to do?
Did the gentleman from Brown's want to speak? Apparently not.
Is there anything that you feel that you should add? Or have we pretty much covered it?
Pretty much covered it.
Well, then, in that case, shall we make a move?
I'm waiting.
Let me get my glasses. Move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement between the City of Ellsworth and Brown's Communication for the construction of and continued
and Brown's Communication for the construction of and continued maintenance of the digital radio communication system, uh, project to be funded by the 2019 bond package.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 18.
Thank you, Sean. Good job.
Adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor? For adjournment?